Oh, now, it's all, everything's on.
When they're red, they're hot.
When they're red, they're hot?
Oh, that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
So you don't want to leave them on?
Okay. Understood.
Check, check, check.
Testing one, two, three, yeah.
And then if I want to turn it off? Push.
Gotcha. Red is hot.
Gotcha.
Red is hot, green is not.
Gotcha. Thank you. I got it.
Make sure my cell phone's on.
Yeah, turn your cellphone off.
Oh!
Just in case.
Oh, oops.
It sounds like...
Oh, okay.
I don't know if Dr. G is coming.
That's seven. As many as you want, thank you. Extras. Do some of them. Do you, do you need one?
Hello, Kinkin? She said she was going to come, but I don't see her yet.
George Christ.
Just a minute.
Good evening, members of the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness and the Culver City Council. Welcome to the joint meeting. Today is March 10th, 2025, and the time is 4:33. We are going to do a roll call. Patrick Godinez.
Here.
And this is also a test for all of your mics. Robert Gagne. Dennis Sales. Emily Dubini. Does not seem to be present. Amy Chernus.
Here.
Daryl Chernus.
Here.
Amber Lee Washington.
Here.
Jonathan Dilworth.
Here.
Kinkin G. Is not present currently. Bubba Fish. Is not present currently. Councilmember McMoran.
Yes.
Councilmember Vera.
President.
Bubba Fish.
Present.
Vice Mayor Puzza.
Present.
And Mayor O'Brien.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all are present except for Chair Guy and Member Dubini.
Great, thank you. Can we start with the pledge of allegiance? Everyone, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Any reports from staff other than what we're doing here?
No.
Okay, any comments from the public?
Mayor, is your microphone on?
It is. Am I gonna?
Hello?
Much better, thank you.
All right, I'm just gonna hold it all night.
We have no joint public comment for items not on the agenda.
Okay, wonderful. Can I have a motion received and file joint correspondence?
I'll move.
Mayor, there was no correspondence. We don't need to move forward with that.
Let's get started with the agenda. We've got the...
We have a consent calendar item, and this is just for the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness. These are the minutes that were approved by, on, uh... It was approved by City Council on May 20, 10th, 2021. And we are asking that the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness approve the April 19, 2021 minutes, which was the last time this joint body met. And so we're going to ask for a motion from the members of the Advisory Committee. And you should have received them all in your packet.
Has anybody had a chance to review those minutes?
Jeremy, procedurally, if none of us were here, how do we vote on something from four years ago? Good question. I was about to say, just tell you. You don't need to have been present to say that what is included in the content is accurate. You just have to say that, yes, you believe that these minutes are accurate, and they have already been approved by the City Council. So this, we're just getting a, a buy-in that the committee has agreed to it so that we can put them away. It's basically procedural. But if you haven't read them, that would be a different story. And we can bring them to another, just a regular Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness, if you prefer.
If I may add, can I suggest that we do that? None of us have, looks like, reviewed those. And I think it'd be a little better served if we do that our next meeting.
I agree.
Sounds good. By show of hands, one, two, three, four, five, six, up, we have a majority that have decided to do that. So we will skip over that component, and we'll get to them at your next meeting. And I will hand them over to Christina right now. So, we are on to the action items. And this action item one is the status update on the 2018 Plan to Prevent and Combat Homelessness and the City Council authorization to release a request for proposals to prepare and update Culver City's 2018 Plan to prevent and combat homelessness by reevaluating existing short-term and long-term strategies to address homelessness in Culver City as recommended by the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness. And I'm going to turn it over to Director Burns.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Chair of the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness, and Vice Chair of the Committee on Housing and Homelessness in both bodies. It is very exciting and wonderful to bring you both together, especially as we now do a postmortem of our 2018 plan and also as we look forward to developing and adopting a new plan. For the sake of the public, I am Tevis Barnes, Housing and Human Services Director. With me this evening will be many names that you've seen in emails or maybe have even spoken to them directly. Next to me is Christina Stoffers, who is our management analyst. Behind me, we have Brenda Diaz. She's our housing assistant. Many of you will recognize her by sending her homeless outreach request. Also, I'm gonna pause because Dr. Guy has joined us.
Let the record reflect, but the time is 4:40.
Also behind me is Aramis White Sharon, who is the Assistant to the City Manager on Homelessness. Many of you have interfaced with Aramis, and she worked very closely with Housing and Human Services in various other departments coordinating our homelessness, how we address homelessness in our city. Online, we have Shannon Lewis, who is our Rent Control and Tenant Protections Manager in case there are any questions related to that, because that was one of our goals in our plan. And then Christina Burles has also prepared, if there's any legislation that y'all want to chit chat about with regards, as it relates to housing and homelessness. You know, I was just thinking, there are four members on the council who had, at some point in time, served on the Committee on Homelessness. I first met Mayor O'Brien when it was the ad hoc Committee on Homelessness. And it was developed as a strategy to address homelessness in our city. And so part of that strategy was to create an advisory batch of citizens to advise the council on how to address homelessness. And included in that was a goal to have homeless outreach two days a week from a selected vendor. So that's just to let you know where we've come from, what, 15 years ago, to where we are today. I also had the opportunity of meeting Vice Mayor Puzza when he served, when it was referred to as the Committee on Homelessness. And he served to give outreach and communication and also did training of our volunteer enumerators during several of our homeless counts. Councilmember Vera also served on the Committee on Homelessness as well. He had always supported our homeless count efforts before he served on the committee, before he served on the council, and of course, after. And then, of course, our newest council member, Bubba Fish, who worked with staff to the new name, which is now the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness, to fold in more purpose on affordable housing and to also focus on legislation that impacts homelessness and housing. So four of our council members have served on this body in one iteration over and over for the last 15 years. So I've had the opportunity of working with y'all folks in both capacities, which is a wonderful thing. So in 2018, the council adopted the three-year roadmap that describes the city's long-term approach to addressing homelessness. It's now been 12 years, and we wanted this document, and the committee itself wanted this document to be more than just a dust collector and to actually be an action plan and roadmap. And over the last five years or so, we've actually held two retreats with the Committee on Homelessness to work with staff to see the status on how we are with meeting those goals. And so this evening, we're gonna take a moment to walk you through the status of what those goals are and then, of course, give you the status. We have incorporated some video with that for the sake of the public to help educate them on some of the things and projects that we've been working on. So if you've seen them before, please bear with us, but we did want to take this opportunity to also educate the public who are watching or attending of what the city is doing to address homelessness. So first, I'm going to, next slide, please. Detail the goals that were part of the original 2018 homeless plan. And please give me a moment. I actually debated whether or not I should read through each and every one of them, but I think it's important for the public that I do that. So please give me a moment to read through them. So there were seven goals in the original 2018 plan. The first was to increase bridge housing options and the number of people served. At that time, emergency housing was, the new phraseology was "bridge housing", which is now, we refer to as interim housing. Goal number two, expand homelessness prevention and programming. And that primarily focused on looking at something such as rent control ordinance. Goal number three, increase access to affordable and supportive housing across the city. Goal number four, enhance data tracking, homeless outreach activities among city staff and service providers. Goal number five, expand community education efforts around homelessness, raise awareness about available resource and best practices. Goal number six, create local programs to increase workforce training and job opportunities. And then lastly, goal number seven, enhance local and regional coordination. So what I'm gonna do now is turn this over to Christina Stoffers, our management analyst. And she's going to start walking us through these goals and the status. And we've incorporated with that some videos as well. So I'm going to turn it over now to Christina.
Good evening, everyone. The first goal of Culver City's homeless plan focused on expanding affordable housing options for its unhoused residents and has made significant progress. In 2019 and in 2021, the city conducted a temporary shelter and motel reuse feasibility study to identify potential areas for developing both interim and permanent supportive housing. These efforts laid the groundwork for future housing solutions aimed at addressing homelessness in the city. In January of 2022, the city applied for and was awarded $26.6 million through Project Home Key Round Two Funding Grant. This grant enabled the purchase of two local motels, which were converted into interim and permanent supportive housing. The result is the Culver City Project Home Key Intram and Permanent Supportive Housing Program, which now offers 38 interim housing units and 35 permanent supportive housing units. This program provides onsite wraparound services, including case management, mental health support, and medical services. Exodus Recovery serves as the lead onsite service provider for this project. In August of 2023, Culver City further expanded its housing solutions by opening its first-ever Safe Sleep Intram Housing Community called Wellness Village. This facility consists of 20 tents, offering a safe environment for individuals who are chronically unhoused and not yet ready for indoor housing. Wellness Village provides its residents with access to a wide range of social services with Urban Alchemy acting as lead service provider. Additionally, in late 2023 and in mid 2024, Culver City secured long-term leases with both Roadway Inn and Paradise Inn, creating a total of 45 interim housing units for the unhoused population. These units also, also offer participants daily meals provided by every table, ensuring their basic needs are met while they transition to more permanent housing solutions. Lastly, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, awarded Culver City Housing Authority five rental assistance vouchers through the Foster Youth to Independence Program. These vouchers will provide rental assistance to five youth ages 18 to 24 for a period of three to five years. These initiatives demonstrate Culver City's ongoing commitment to increase, to increasing affordable housing and providing essential services to support its unhoused residents. Please advance to the next slide. Thank you. Now, we're gonna go ahead and watch a show, now, we're gonna go ahead and watch a video showcasing the grand opening of the Culver City Project Home Key.
If we could just have a moment as we pull up that video.
Cool. All right.
After 12 months of renovation work, the city of Culver City welcomed the opening of Project Home Key, a new supportive housing project on Sepulveda Boulevard.
By revitalizing these two properties, we are helping to bring dozens of unhoused neighbors off the streets.
It's another step in the progress of solving homelessness, one unhoused neighbor at a time.
Our unhoused population is seeking a way of building up trust again. Building trust somehow, a little bit of proof, or whatever reason it felt better. The system is failing. Bringing them here, showing them that we have love and compassion for them, and the service they need, I think, is really a step in the right direction.
The two repurposed and adjacent motels provide 73 new units of interim housing and permanent supportive housing. Each room provides a welcoming decoration with a focus on accessibility and comfort. The first tenants will arrive in October. The project's approach streamlines housing and social services. Exodus Recovery oversees services at the locations, including meals, laundry services, as well as security on-site. Residents will also have access to social services, including onsite case manager, 24/7 health monitoring, and mental health clinicians.
It's heavy on case management, and that's really important with this population of people. They're vulnerable.
Project Home Key's process required key help from local and state lawmakers, including a $26.6 million grant from the state of California.
That's solving this problem. That is leading. That's from a city of 40,000 and serving as a model for the entire county. I love the innovation that's happening in Culver City.
This partnership with every level of government was always focused on the same goal, which is to house our family, friends, and neighbors who have been unhoused for far too long. And I'm very proud to represent the city of the 87 others in the county who, who get it. So I appreciate you, Culver City.
Project Home Key now adds to the other services Culver City provides, including Safe Sleep, outreach services, motel master leasing, as well as the Mobile Crisis Team. The city of Culver City remains committed to lifting up our unhoused neighbors.
It's the beginning of a long process. And I know that in the community, they should move forward to learn the process for us all. The city level will be monitoring, it'll be sort of adjusting as we need. But I have the full confidence with Exodus, as well as the city's operational management and the facility, that it can be great.
Can we advance to the next slide? So now we'll watch a video on the grand opening of the Culver City Wellness Village program.
Hi, I'm Tevis Barnes. I'm the Housing and Human Services Director. Today, we are celebrating something very wonderful and exciting. We're having an open house for Culver City's first Safe Sleep site. Safe Sleep is an approach to providing services and housing to our unhoused neighbors who are not quite ready to come inside, but who are wealthy and transitioning in lives and to begin to accept services that will lead them to permanent housing.
I'm Dimitri, the Director of Public Works and City Engineer. So what you're looking at behind me is 20 tents being housed up to two individuals, and we have a total of 20 of them. We created these platforms out of wood and aluminum that are at the bottom, right beneath the tents. They are six inches above ground. The idea is to protect tents behind me from the rain in case the parking lot gets flooded.
It is 24 hours, 7 days a week of services and staff. It ranges from everything, from just hygiene, all the way to job placements. So first, we work close to just get them back inside and to revisit and lean on those living skills. Then we start working on some of the things that are the reasons why they are homeless, any of the trauma that they are getting, or if it's with any type of substance use or mental health issues. And then we work again then to job training, supportive services, and also other housing avenues that everyone... Those are the types of services. We also do three meals a day, warm meals, so it's not just like, you know, box lunch. And we accommodate all their periodic needs. They have showers and bathrooms on-site. We also provide laundry service for the sheets in the towels. So those are all the things that we're providing as we, as a city, do what we can to address homelessness.
All right, another key goal achieved from Culver City's 2018 homeless plan is the significant expansion of health, mental health, and outreach services for our unhoused residents. In March of 2024, Culver City launched its first-ever Mobile Crisis Team, which is a multidisciplinary unit designed to provide non-emergency mental health care and support. The team consists of a human crisis and intervention manager, mental health clinician, mental health specialist, and case manager. In April of 2024, the city contracted with Healthcare in Action to provide mobile street medical and psychiatric services to unhoused individuals. This service is staffed by a team of medical professionals, including a physician, physician assistant, medical assistant, peer navigators, and a coordinator. In June of 2024, Culver City further expanded its outreach efforts by introducing the Urban Alchemy Leading Outreach with Valued Engagement, also known as the Love Team. The Love Team provides outreach services from 3:00 PM to 11:30 PM daily. This four-person team is capable of assessing, transporting, and directly enrolling unhoused individuals into interim housing services in Culver City. These initiatives highlight Culver City's ongoing commitment to improving health services and outreach efforts to support its unhoused population. Can we advance to the next slide? So now we'll watch a quick video on the grand opening of the Culver City Mobile Crisis Team. Can we advance to the next slide? So the third goal Culver City has successfully implemented in its homeless plan is the expansion of homelessness prevention programming, particularly through the establishment of rent control and tenant protection measures. On September 29th, 2020, the Culver City Council adopted two permanent ordinances, the rent control ordinance and the tenant protection ordinances. These two ordinances, which came into effect on October 30th, 2020, aim to provide greater stability and security for renters, thereby preventing displacement and reducing the risk of homelessness for vulnerable residents. Can we advance to the next slide? So now we'll watch a brief video highlighting Culver City's rent control measures and tenant protections.
The rent control and permanent tenant protection ordinances went into effect in Culver City on October 30th, 2020. With some exceptions, there is now a limit on annual rent increases for all rental units in Culver City built on or before February 1st, 1995. Annual rent increases are based on the average annual change in the Consumer Price Index. If you rent in Culver City or own a rental unit, here are a few things you should know. All landlords must register their rental properties with the city by March 31st, 2022. Maximum permissible annual rent increases for future periods are posted monthly to the city's website. Four cause and no fault grounds are required for evictions. Relocation assistance, three times monthly rent.
Relocation assistance, three times monthly rent plus $1,000, may be available for no-fault evictions. Landlords must make units safe or relocate tenants during construction work that makes their units uninhabitable. Tenants are protected by anti-harassment laws. To learn more, visit culvercity.org/rent or call the Housing Division at 310-253-5790.
All right, so now I'm going to go ahead and turn it back over to Tevis to discuss legislation. Can we please advance to the next slide? Thank you.
The Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness, as we were, you know, busy implementing the various goals of the 2018 plan, also realized that we needed to take a more robust focus on legislation. Those conversations were largely led by the committee member at the time, who's now councilmember Fish. This will probably come up when you look at the development of the scope of work for the new plan. The list that's provided on your screen is not exhaustive, but these were some things that the committee have brought up to staff and had conversations around. So we thought it's important, though it was not an original goal of the plan, but it was an area that the body wanted to focus on. So staff would advise, as we seek to update 2018 plan, update the 2018 plan, this is something that is brought into focus. We did ask Christina Burles to be here, that when we start our deliberations, if there are any questions surrounding the legislation that's presented on this screen or there's any additional legislation that both bodies feel should be brought into play as we look to update our plan. I'm going to now turn it back over to Christina, and she's going to continue to highlight our various goals and the status of those goals.
The fourth goal Culver City has implemented as part of its homeless plan is enhancing community education efforts around homelessness. To support this, Culver City hired a dedicated homeless coordinator in October of 2018 to oversee and streamline homelessness initiatives and outreach efforts. Additionally, the city retained LISAR development consultants to create a comprehensive homeless toolkit designed for local businesses and community members. This toolkit provides valuable resources and strategies aimed at educating the public about homelessness and offering guidance on how individuals and organizations can provide support. Culver City has also strengthened its focus on homelessness by transitioning its Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness meetings from a bi-monthly to a monthly schedule. This change enables the committee to more effectively identify gaps in existing services, programs, and policies related to homelessness. Since 2019, Culver City has participated in monthly coordination meetings with the Culver City Unified School District Needs Committee. These meetings focus on addressing the needs of families who are unhoused or at risk of homelessness, and on identifying social services and housing resources that the city can provide to assist these families. In July of 2023, Culver City further expanded its efforts by engaging the PR consulting firm Rally to develop updated materials for homelessness, programming, and outreach. These new materials effectively communicate the city's holistic approach to addressing homelessness and the resources available to support those in need. These initiatives reflect Culver City's commitment to not only tackling homelessness directly, but also fostering a well-informed and proactive community in addressing this critical issue. Can we advance to the next slide? The fifth goal Culver City has achieved is improving data tracking and homelessness outreach services for city staff and service providers through the creation of two key digital tools, the Homeless Dashboard and the Homeless Outreach Request Portal. The Homeless Dashboard is a digital platform that provides a visual overview of the key data and metrics related to the city's homelessness programs and services. The Homeless Outreach Request Portal is an online tool that enables the community to request outreach assistance for individuals experiencing homelessness. It streamlines the process by automatically marking the location of each request and organizing the data. This spatial data helps Culver City identify trends and areas of high need, ensuring that resources are allocated effectively and efficiently. Together, these tools enhance the city's ability to track and respond to homelessness more effectively. Can we advance to the next slide?
Sorry for the delay. I had a problem with my button. Again, I'm Tevis Barnes, Housing and Human Services Director. Goal number six was to create local programs to increase workforce training and job opportunities. It became very important for city staff to look at organizations that hire persons who are currently experiencing homelessness and who formerly experienced homelessness. So we were able to partner with Urban Alchemy, who ninety-five percent of their staff have experienced homelessness or been part of the justice system. They provide extensive training to their staff and provide opportunities for not only personal growth, but growth in the organization to even become managers in that situation. So we're very happy to partner with them, and we think they bring a skill set to our homeless outreach and to working with Wellness Village and in our motels that can better serve our unhoused residents, while the city also helps to provide training and job opportunities for folks who are experiencing homelessness or who were formerly homeless. Next slide, please. Our last goal is Culver City had to enhance regional and local coordination. I have to take a moment. For anyone who's ever met this person, they understand that she is both fierce and fearless. And this is Aramis White Sharon, who is our Assistant to the City Manager on Homelessness. Aramis serves on the Westside City's Council of Governments, the Homeless Working Group. And through that group, we look at and develop regional strategies to address homelessness. And Aramis makes sure that Culver City is at the table and that we are heard. She also coordinates with the county, the Army Corps, and also the various other Los Angeles City Council districts that intersect with our city to make sure that, again, Culver City is always at the table and is heard, and that they coordinate with us as we address homelessness together. We also serve or sit on the Home Keep Piers cohort, and this is for communities that have received Home Keep dollars, and they work together to discuss best practices. And Christina attends those along with representatives from Exodus. This concludes staff's portion of the presentation. And what we would like to do now is to turn it over to the people who have been wonderful partners with working with city staff and helping to us to initially adopt the plan and then working with staff to make sure that we are meeting our goals. So I am going to now turn this over to Chair Dr. Kenken Gee, and then also Vice Chair Jonathan Dilworth. And they're going to walk us through the scope of work developed by the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness, and then also to introduce a few goals that they would like to incorporate in the new plan. So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Gee.
Okay, I'm going to get started. I'll hand it over to Dr. Gee. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, and our Advisory Committee of Housing and Homelessness members. My name is Jonathan Dilworth, the Vice Chair of the committee. One of the things that we've been working with city staff is to create a scope of work for an RFP to a third-party consultant to help update this homeless plan. So we've been, we have a subcommittee that's helping with the project management and coordination with city staff. We've really broken this plan into four different phases. The initial phase is just research and a kickoff meeting with a consultant and talk to them about our goals and what we're trying to get out of the plan. And then our goal is to have them have stakeholder outreach and input and go out to the community, not only the community of Culver City, but also the stakeholders that live in the interim housing projects that we have, and really get an idea of what it means for success from them. What is a successful program, not just in the metrics that we've been putting on our website of all of the projects that have been going on, but what are their success stories? What does it mean to them for these programs? I think is a really, we felt was a really important part of the scope of work. And then Phase Three, they draft updated strategies, review processes, and then finally the submission of a final plan. And then Phase Four would be to present that to the community. And then we wrap that up with several hearings and meetings within our subcommittee and our committee, and then within city staff. I wanted to, if I could get the next slide, please? Some of the goals that we have asked to be brought into the plan were ways to, we can expedite affordable housing. We really felt like we have a really robust services around homelessness, but we really wanted to add affordable housing into the scope of work. One of them is to increase incentives for developers, nonprofit developers, to come in and build affordable housing within our community. And what does that mean? And so the incentives really are a combination of, I would say, city staff processes, being able to not have to wait in line and plan check, and, you know, expedite throughout the process of plan check and building and safety processes. The other thing that a lot of our surrounding communities and cities have is a housing trust fund, is something that we really think should be looked into and brought to the table to help with funding gaps that a lot of these affordable housing projects experience. During, a lot of the federal, state, and county funding sources are highly competitive, and oftentimes, if you don't qualify in a round or you miss a round, you have to wait a following year to reapply. And so these projects just kind of sit stagnant for a little while. And so having a housing trust fund that can kind of fill these gaps really means the success of having these projects come into our city. The fees, of course, are exhaustive within real estate development. And so, you know, we think if you're going to be bringing affordable housing units into our city, we should look at some fees that could be waived to help with these incentives. And finally, to either eliminate or reduce the amount of public meetings and community engagement processes that are needed for affordable housing. These processes, these meetings, they really create a lot of roadblocks into the community. And it makes it a challenge to get these projects, you know, into our community where, trying to phrase this without saying like, basically, the NIMBY-ness of our community is challenging to get through. And so we want to try to help expedite that process. And the other thing, let's see, I guess the services gaps. Do you want to talk about that? I'll hand it off to Dr. Gee.
Sure. Thank you, Vice Chair. Okay, I think this is working a little bit better now that it's been turned on. Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. One of the roles that the chair has is to summarize and highlight the goals that we'd like to achieve in the coming years, both short-term and long-term. So first of all, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that in the past five years that I've been a member of the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness, this is the first time that the council has invited us to participate in a joint meeting with them. So we truly appreciate the honor and the opportunity afforded us. So we don't take this gesture lightly. And to continue on the topics that the Vice Chair expounded on, we are next looking at the prospect of hiring a vendor to conduct surveys at interim and permanent homelessness housing sites to see how and where we can proceed from this point. And of course, we'd be remiss if we didn't address the root causes of homelessness, which are many. It's a multifactorial problem that we need to address with multifactorial tools at best to be efficient. And we need to develop tools and parameters and criteria on how we tend to or plan to define program success. So we'd like to invite recommendations from the council and, of course, from our fellow residents and citizens of Culver City on how we can define program success going forward. And I'd like to also mention the fact that in an earlier press release that was released last month, on February 27th, Mr. Justin Kleeman, Communications and Public Information Manager, there was discussion of project-based vouchers to meet the needs of the budget for the Jubelo Village Affordable Housing Project. So we'd like to tell you that we appreciate, and I wouldn't go as far as to say recommend, but it sounds reasonable to use the project-based vouchers that the staff recommended to proceed forward with that project. And again, I'd like to echo what the Vice Chair said about Housing Trust Fund that would enable the city to produce and preserve affordable housing for extremely low and very low-income households, much in the way that Santa Monica was able to convert an 8.3 million acquisition and pre-development loan into an 11.7 million construction slash permanent supportive housing development loan with the help of the Harris Community Development and Housing Team. And as last but not least, I should mention that what we discussed at our last committee meeting was the fact that the observation at the last homeless count session was that there was an increase in RVs and vans during the homelessness count performed this year, just two months ago. And since we are facing a likely increase in housing costs by way of increased lumber cost and whatnot, with the federal government's plan to impose tariffs, it might be a good idea to consider looking at the safe parking program, because we do have an increase in the number of RVs and vans discovered during our last homelessness count two months ago. So the next slide has to do with discussions and questions. So we'd like to entertain any discussion, questions, recommendations that anybody has in the topics that we've discussed. Remember Godenas?
Thank you very much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, staff, fellow committee members. My name is Patrick Godenas. Patrick Godinez. I would like to, I feel that in regards to bringing on a person, you know, for the request or proposal and pay them, you know, some type of, you know, funds, I would be against, I really believe that that could be, you know, handled, you know, internally, especially when the, the LA Homeless Initiative has our goals and objectives for this three-year and the resources in that group and the contacts and the organizations I really believe, you know, can help us determine our best, the way to treat this homelessness. We've got a great group of committee members that are part of that subcommittee, which is the LA Initiative that's, that's out there. And then in regards to the vendor surveys and so forth, I, I do believe that we could do that, you know, internally with the, the group that we have, Ergabahlami is being fantastic. I mean, all the other groups I think could handle that survey and really give us a good idea of what our clients or our guests are, you know, are feeling and their, and their wants. You know, I believe that the monies that, that were appropriated or being looked at would be better served as a grant writer status to bring on somebody, you know, that has been successful, you know, in bringing in, you know, money, you know, face it, the very first step in achieving this is money. And we really need to relieve some of the taxpayers of this great city. You all have been so fantastic about giving certain budget, but as this one person said, we don't want to break the bank, you know, either. You know, so with a, with a professional, successful, you know, grant writers, they also could also take a look at some of the grants that we proposed in the past, especially when it comes to, you know, 13, you know, million, a million dollars, they could kind of take a look at what was missed, why were we denied, what steps that we need to take to be successful with the grants that we're putting forward? Because a lot of time and effort in putting these things, you mentioned before, if you missed it, you have to, you know, wait for the next, you know, boat that, you know, come around. And I feel that this grant writer could really work with HUD, HUD, they could work with LOTS, you know, they could work with the LA Initiative, you know, you know, board, you know, in, in creating what is needed, you know, in regards to monies, but also more operational needs to not only receive it, but to also stay accountable for the money hopefully that they, they receive. And also too, working with our LA Initiative Committee and, and this grant person in the Finance Committee, we really should develop a really strong Culver City Housing Trust Fund, you know, with everybody, you know, involved, you know, so with a great group that we have, you know, working with the LA Initiative and the grant writer, I think we should, we could do some great things, not only for the clients that are out there, but also for the tax, taxpayers of this, you know, gray city and really build, 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 build. And also take a look at our clients and their insurance companies, are the insur, what type of insurance and possibly relieve some burden through the insurance providers. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other members?
Can you hear me? Okay. I want to, one of the points that was discussed was having a PR campaign to focus on affordable housing myth-busting. I, I'd like to echo a little bit what Member Godinez said. I think there's a tendency to kind of have this knee-jerk approach of let's, let's spend lots, six figures and hire consultants when there might be people in-house who can do the job. So for example, PR campaign to focus on affordable housing myth-busting. This committee has an outreach subcommittee. Why not use the outreach subcommittee to go around the city, talk to people about myths about affordable housing? Why not use the resources we already have rather than using expensive outside consultants? That was one thing I wanted to say. The second and last thing is there was a discussion about increasing incentives to build affordable housing. I'd like to get more specific information about specifically what type of incentives are we discussing? That was it.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the body? Okay.
I'm going to reserve my comments till after council has an opportunity to speak. I said I'm going to reserve comments.
Okay. I think the time now is to have council members ask questions and seek feedback. Can I start with Councilmember Fish?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for, for being here and thanks for your service to the Advisory Committee. I'm really, it, it was really great to see everything that we have done. I think none of those things existed when I joined the Advisory Committee, so it's all, it's all been in the past, I mean, it obviously started way before that, but it's just cool to see how much has been done pretty quickly. So hats off to staff and to all of you for continuing the work. It's really great to see. I'm, I really liked the, the point in the presentation or the goal in the presentation around tracking the, the, you know, the numbers in every program that we, and, and tracking each individual through all of our programs. And the dashboard's, you know, really great, and I know a lot of my colleagues were involved in the creating of that. I'm really curious if we could be calculating the cost per service or per, per user or per resident for our services or if that could be a goal in this updated, in this updated plan, only because cost shouldn't be the only thing we're thinking about, right? But if we see that one program is really excelling, for example, with a low cost per user and we're trying to decide where to put our limited dollars, you know, where do we throw the, the, where, where do we sort of throw the lighter fluid on it? That sounds really bad, actually, but how do we just, you know, put more resources into something that's really doing well and that's cost-effective? So that's one sort of metric. I was curious if there's been a discussion of, of the cost per user or if that's something that could be incorporated? And that's for any, maybe it's for you, Vice Chair. Yeah.
I think that's a great addition to the scope of work and one of the goals that I had. Maybe do a more of a finance deep dive into the cost of, of services as well. We can talk through that with city staff for sure. Great addition. Thank you.
Yeah, we can definitely add it to our agenda item for our next meeting of the committee.
Sure. Wonderful. And I just have one more comment. I love the emphasis I heard on housing production. That was, you know, something that, I think that was the, the main reason to rename the committee, you know, the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness, which I wasn't a part of the renaming, but at least I don't think. I, and, but that's, but just the emphasis that you had on that, especially from you, Vice Chair, on the ways we can expedite affordable housing, and there's an item coming up to council, I think we're going to see it in the homelessness committee or Housing and Homelessness Committee Subcommittee first, but I would love to work with y'all from that committee on ways we can expedite affordable housing. And you, you mentioned some of them, so, you know, how do we, you know, expedite permitting? And, you know, there's community meetings, there's, you know, impact fees, and all of those things make a difference, right? In terms of, like, it took Jubalo Village six years to get here, to get to where it is tonight. So, sorry, I'm seeing your hands. Yes?
You mentioned cost-effectiveness and particularly the gas portion. Sab has done a wonderful job, you know, putting it together and members and so forth. And, you know, I'm not too sure, of course, if the public, you know, rate for everything, but I did notice that the figures were unaudited, you know, so to seem to answer your question or to find out what program, you know, is most cost, you know, effective, you know, might need some type of, you know, professional, you know, audit, you know, because maybe internally you have a lot of other things to do, but to really get to that dollar sense of it, I think you might need, you know, some type of audit and not un-audited and then put that on that dashboard.
Thank you. Yeah, that would be really helpful. So I guess my question on that last part was just would, could we engage you all in that conversation in the subcommittee? And I know Director Barnes is, is aware of the item too, so maybe we could try to, you know, to bring in the, the committee on those, some of those conversations that the subcommittee is having. I don't know the procedure behind that, but just a thought.
Dana, could you speak to that?
Hi.
Hi.
Red is on. Red is on. So I think some of you who appointed me to this committee know that's actually why I joined. I do this for a living and the housing piece was missing. And I kind of have, this has been my mantra since we, we started the committee. That's my primary focus here is to bring my professional experience, the experience I had on the commission, what I know of working with staff, the physical roadblocks I've experienced doing projects in Culver City and seeing what applicants have to go through and working on Jubalo and watching all of the roadblocks. We are hoping to change that because the missing piece in the homelessness equation is that there's nowhere for people to go when they can't afford to pay their rent before they go to the streets. And we don't have a gap and we don't have a place for somebody who may be at risk in that interim step. And, and the city has done an incredible job on services over the last five to seven years and now it's time to potentially, I think one of the things we were talking about as a committee was, right, it's always, what is the priority of the current council? And is it a priority of this council to evaluate moving in that direction to now figure out the gap? And I think we as a committee were very firmly aligned in this dialogue that we're doing great on homeless services, but we are doing really poorly on, on housing production for those people who are at risk. And that at least wanted to be our focus.
I've heard it described before as we're doing a good job bailing out the boat, but we're not plugging the
Holes.
The holes. And I really like the way you described it. And I'm, I'm happy to hear that being a focus. The one thing I didn't see in the, in the 2018 plan, and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues, is I would love to see a recognition of the association between all housing, not just affordable housing, but the production of all housing and homelessness. We've seen from, you know, the book, "Homelessness is a Housing Problem," that it's directly correlated, right? Cities that are building homes are, on average, keeping their median rents more stable than cities that aren't. So if this body comes to us with just policies that can increase housing production in general, and that's what some of the legislative things, I appreciate Director Barnes including that, but just legislation we can support on a state level, things on a local level that have already been passed that we're not taking advantage of to just build, that for me would be really impactful because we'd be hearing from y'all, the Advisory Committee, on how we can make housing more abundant, just in, across the board in general here in Culver City. So thank you for all that you're doing and that's my last comment. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here this evening. Thank you to staff for the presentation and community members that are present. It feels like, well, on August 12th of 2024, I requested this joint meeting. Grants passed, the ruling of Grants Pass had come out not too long ago, and I think we just had the one meeting in July. I think that was a busy meeting. So the first meeting in August, I had requested this and, and grateful to have support from colleagues to have this meeting. I'm still very curious how our state of emergency and our homelessness plan will intersect. So I'm, I'm curious about that. As we all see, there's a lot of uncertainty with funding from the federal level, which is impacting state, county and local levels, so thoughts about that? Really appreciate, and echoing, my colleague really appreciate the focus on housing production and all of the things that go along with that and emphasis on safe, safe parking, which is something that, you know, when I supported the point-in-time count earlier this year, saw a lot of folks in their cars, so there seems to be an increased need for that in our community. Something I talk a lot about from the DIAUSS is the cost of inaction. I know we talk a lot about how much things cost, but are there other areas and where if we don't invest, those costs show up for the city? So very curious about that. As well as we see that, a data point I'm thinking about specifically is the population of CCUSD students who do not live in Culver City and functionally knowing that if we did not have those students, the district would not be solvent, right? So what that communicates to me, given that the school has space, means that our housing is incredibly unaffordable to young families. And what does that mean for us as a city? What does that mean for us as good partners to our school district? So that's just one area. And I'm, I'm happy to hear that there appears to be a monthly meeting with the Needs Committee, so I don't know if that is something that is discussed with the CCUSD Committee there, but just wanted to elevate that in the space because that's just one area where our lack of housing impacts us. And just also appreciate the elevation of the Westside Cog and our Assistant City Manager being, on housing and homelessness being in that space and just the emphasis on working regionally. There's been a, a lot of emails and, and things where it's like, well, that's not Culver City and, you know, I, you know, our town is shaped very strangely, these 5.2 square miles, and there just seems to be a lot of opportunity to continue to lock arms with this crisis because when you're, you know, a stone's throw outside of Culver City to not have access to housing programs or wraparound services seems, you know, like not the right way to do it. But, you know, MOUs and things would have to be established, so very curious about how that could work so we could support our neighbors better and, and to housing. But thank you so much all for being here and, and your dedication to the city in this capacity. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank staff, Aramis Tevis and your entire staff, and then Ken Kin and Jonathan and this entire committee that volunteers your time so selfishly. Thank you all so much for your, your hard work and everything that you do. And I agree with, you know, a lot that was said over here. And I do want, I think Mr. Schurn has brought it forward about more, more information on how we can incentivize or increase incentives for building. I think, you know, we want to determine where that gap is and where the city can do a better job at, and I agree with the fee waivers, it's a great thing. And I believe the Vice Mayor brought forward Housing Trust Fund earlier to agendize it, so I, I'm looking forward to that conversation. It's a great idea. You know, across the board, this is some really good stuff. There was one question, I think somebody answered it as I was writing it. And Patrick, I think, you know, you were talking about grant writers and Daryl mentioned, you know, using in-house. I'd love to see really what a combination of both of those would look like, how we can use the resources that we have, which I think is a great idea. And if, you know, and/or maybe outside, but I think, you know, let's tap in on what we have here that we can identify and use quickly. And then Dana, you were talking about, you know, where that gap is, and I think it's really important to identify that and see where we can do better. I think this council and the previous couple of councils have, went from $300,000, $400,000 to fighting this issue to over $16.5, $17 million. So we've done, I think, more so than any other municipality in the area. I think out of that, let's try to identify where we can do better with the resources that we have. But this is great work and, and thank you all so much for, for everything that you do. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to staff for the presentation and to the committee for all the work. Really looking forward to the second iteration of this plan. Really appreciate the thoughtfulness of everything in it. Really looking forward to and supporting the Housing Trust Fund and finding streams of revenue so that we can put our money where our mouth is on supporting affordable housing production. Going back to just the job training and just thinking about ways to increase, expedite affordable housing production, but I think a central piece about that is the different layers of people's progression. Going back to just the job training and just thinking about ways to increase expedite affordable housing production, but I think an essential piece about that is the different layers of people's progression through this cycle, and job training is one of them. So the possibility of working with unions and vocational centers for job training. Also, you know, some affordable housing has affordability thresholds, so what happens when people get salaries that go above that? So how are we working with the different organizations to help people as they cycle through different layers and transition through different cycles? Another thing is that I know in Supervisor Holly Mitchell's newsletter, she highlighted Redondo Beach. It was the first city in her district to achieve functional zero. So maybe this is something that we can look into applying for. There's a study by the Urban Institute that found that this focused approach can really accelerate communities' progress on subsequent populations, so it looks at chronic homelessness, veterans, youth, et cetera, and so on. And just plus one, again, on a grant writer, I think that's really important to have a dedicated person looking at different funding opportunities that we can have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just to be sure, anyone have any response to anything that you heard so far? Okay. Oh, wait, Chair.
I wanted to respond to Councilmember McMoran's query about how many non-Culver City residents attend C C U S D schools, I believe that was one of your questions.
Thank you, Chair. It was in reference to some of the costs of not investing in housing, and that being a data point that is just illustrative of the fact that, you know, it's expensive and younger families, or just families in general, cannot afford to live here. So just as an example of a data point that might illustrate the lack of investment and the impacts that it's having on our overall community. Another could be our jobs and homes imbalance, and how that's pretty lopsided in terms of us offering a ton of jobs and only having, like, you know, one unit per 60-ish jobs, so that's another data point. So it's just, it depends on how you look at it, but if there are more opportunities that the committee is aware of, in terms of actually identifying what the cost of not investing in housing and homelessness services, you know, it just adds something to think about.
I think that one of the goals that we enumerated, which is hiring a vendor to conduct surveys at interim and permanent homelessness housing sites, I think should answer the question about the C C U S D students and how many of them are non-Culver City residents and whatnot. So we do need to do the surveys to get a statistical profile of how many, you know, students can't afford to live here in Culver City, per se. Also, we are aware of the fact that a lot of our workforce, even folks who work at City Hall, have to live outside of Culver City because they just can't afford to live here. And it has serious consequences. For example, if our frontline workers, like firefighters, have to live in Ventura County, and they have to commute two hours to get here to work in case of the event of a fire or something catastrophic, like an earthquake, where they are going to be at the front line, or fire even, you know, for them to have to commute two hours to get to us is a real problem. So we do need to find and come up with affordable housing programs for our workforce, first and foremost, and for the kids who attend our C C U S D schools, so we are aware of the problems with transportation and whatnot in meeting our emergency needs, first and foremost. So we are aware of that, and we are working with that.
Yeah, Member Goode, miss.
Yes, to address the question regarding the different levels of homelessness, we have the portable housing part of it, now, and then the folks that are on the streets are in our wonderful programs. You know, the evidence shows that the continuum of care is the best thing for it. Now, that being used and thrown around so much, but do we really know the definition of continuum of care? What that means is that treating that person all at once, no gaps, you know, treating the body, mind, soul, and spirit all at once, not having any, you know, gaps. Now, to do that is quite a feat, and very few are doing it, and costly, and nor do we want our taxpayers to do it. So I wanted Vice Counsel not to try to reinvent the wheel, that there's organizations and businesses out there that are doing it and doing it well. I would like to, you know, agendize a National Health Foundation to come in and do a presentation and see if any shoes fit and could, you know, reach those layers of homelessness or to prevent homelessness clients that are in our city or visitors, you know, in the city, you know, that could, again, take the tax dollar relief off of our, you know, taxpayers and utilize their outreach in regards to insurance companies and so forth. You know, it's a real win-win situation by bringing in other agencies like that and see what they have to offer.
Thank you. All right. I think it's my turn. Thanks again to all the work that everyone on the body does. It's really critical. I do like that there's a new focus, relatively new focus, on the housing part. That's definitely something that, you know, it's on all of our mouths, you know, tips of our tongues, we're talking about that. We've, you know, we've got a lot of units in the pipeline. How do we get them online quickly is critical, and then all the future projects that we don't know about yet. How do we help facilitate that? The idea is of waiving fees, impact fees for these projects. Obviously, we would, the majority of our affordable housing is being built by mixed market rate and affordable, so there's, you know, a balance we have to strike there with those. And they are getting the density bonuses. The Housing Trust Fund, that's coming up soon, that discussion on council, just so everyone knows. The, I also want to uplift the work that the West Side Council governments, so in case you don't know, that's Culver City, Santa Monica, West Hollywood, and Beverly Hills. We work together. Councilmember McMoran is our representative on that. Again, the alternate, and I'm aware of what's going on, and they are, as a body, they are talking about, and have been talking about, I can't remember what the term is, but like a West Side Center for all of us, so that we are working as a region together. But I do agree that acknowledging that our borders are, you know, that they're not, there's no walls, so it's porous, and our staff does constant communication and contact with our neighbors in L.A. All the council, I think we have three council districts that surround us, so it's a lot of work communicating with them, and it does happen to help find support for all of them. I'd like to piggyback on what Vice Mayor Puzza said about, you know, from the perspective of jobs, we should reach out intentionally to West L.A. College. Maybe they could do direct training at the locations where we have our facilities to help elevate them out of, you know, their position, so that, you know, they are continuing to move forward, that continuum of care. I do want to uplift Mr. Godinez's point about trying to be cost-conscious. We're all aware of what our budget situation is, so if we can do some of that work, you know, like the survey through in-house outreach, I think that would be great. And, small thing, I don't know if Justin Clements here, but those videos are really helpful and to uplift and to promote the work we're doing. We might want to evergreen those and just swap, there's dates in those, and it'd be good to just swap out some language and maybe some graphics that are on some of those, just so that we can keep them going out easily without them obviously being old. I think that's all I have on my list. Does anyone else have any point? I mean, we don't have to present a motion, we're just giving broad direction here, and then it'll come back.
Actually, Mayor, I believe that there are motions.
Okay.
And we do have a speaker.
Okay, wonderful. Let's hear from the speaker first.
Okay. Jean Black.
Good afternoon, council, and advisory committee. It's wonderful to see this joint meeting. For those of you who don't know me, I have an MBA, I have a PhD in health policy and management, and I spent 45 years doing policy analysis, strategic planning, and program evaluation. So I guess I couldn't help myself but make some comments. Of course, I wrote my comments before hearing yours, so I'm rewriting as I'm going along. As Mr. Vera said, you know, we all know that Culver City has done more than any other small city in Southern California to meet the needs of unhoused people. This means we already have a goldmine of data, qualitative as well as quantitative, and it's barely being tapped. I would suggest that we use the opportunity of engaging an outside consultant to really do a deeper dive to evaluate our continuum of care. What's working well? What's a continual issue or barrier? I was glad to learn that there's the homekeeper's cohort, because that's certainly a source of learning. We can't do everything for everyone, and so, as Mr. Fish was saying, what is the most effective way to use our limited resources? The current dashboard, it's a good starting point, but we really need to understand better our most basic metrics. Frankly, what percentage of individuals move from interim housing into permanent housing? That is the most fundamental measure of success nationally, at the state level, L.A. County level. What percent return to homelessness and why? How long do individuals stay in each type of interim housing? What is the average cost per stay? And what subgroups of unhoused people have we actually been serving? The staff knows that well, but I'm not sure that the rest of us do. Are they people who really are going to continue to need supportive services and maybe work a little part-time? Or are they people who, once they get back some stability in their lives, can go out and do a full-time job and live in a mixed, you know, market rate and subsidized building? Because those are two different things, having permanent supportive housing with services versus market rate buildings that have some affordable apartments. The great news is, we're serving a lot of people, and the bad news is that right now, our permanent supportive housing is full, and so there's no place for the people in the interim programs to move to. And so I was very glad to hear. I was going to talk about how the goal need to emphasize more, the production of housing. In 2018, the goal was improve access, and I think now we're emphasizing increasing the production of affordable housing. The updated plan, I hope, would address specifically how the city can better position itself to compete for Measure A funds, not the ones that are automatically going to go to the West Side C O G, but 77.5% of the funding for the new agency.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you. For the new agency, the Los Angeles County Affordable Housing Solutions Authority, 77.5% of their funds is earmarked for housing production, and it so happens that Holly Mitchell chairs the ad hoc committee for housing production. So you've covered, I think, my other points. I just wanted to mention, in terms of making the best use of resources, whether it's for consulting, evaluation, whatever, one option might be to talk with the Luskin School at UCLA about whether augmenting a consultant's work could become a master's project, and I know that one of your members is an alum of that program, and I think there'd probably be a huge amount of interest in housing. And we just, because we've done so much, we have so much potential to learn from what we ourselves have done, and to make that an additional contribution by Culver City.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Okay. You looking for a?
I am looking.
Enumerated?
For two motions. The first motion is that the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness, by themselves, recommend to the city council for them to authorize the release of a request for proposals to prepare and update Culver City's 2018 plan to prevent and combat homelessness, the homelessness plan, by reevaluating existing short-term and long-term strategies to address homelessness in Culver City. So I would like a motion from a member of the committee.
So moved.
I have a motion from Chair Gi, and a second.
I'll second.
I heard the vice.
Can I make an addition to that? Can the plan make sure to include Councilmember Fish's request to try to track costs for these programs, to identify, I'll call bang for the buck. I thought that was a really good recommendation.
Can we add that friendly amendment to the motion?
If you would like, or that can be just added as direction.
Just part of the scope of the plan.
Okay, we have a motion by Chair Gi and a second by Vice Chair Dilworth to recommend for approval. And how do you vote, Chair?
Yes.
Member Washington?
Yes.
Member Daryl Chernus?
Yes.
Member Amy Chernus?
Yes.
Thank you. Member Sales?
Yes.
Member Gagne?
Yes.
Member Godinez?
Nay.
Okay, just doing the tally here. And that motion passes by all of the present committee members, except for Member Godinez. And the abstain are those who did not vote, which is the council. So next, we have that the city council authorized the release of that RFP.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Was that a second by Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember McMoran, Councilmember Fish seconded, and that is to authorize the RFP release. How do you vote, Councilmember Fish?
Aye.
Councilmember McMoran?
Aye.
Councilmember Vera?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Puzza?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Brien? All council members have voted, and that motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk, do I ask for any comments to close the meeting?
We didn't get any more comments. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any final comments from members? Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Can I get a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Vera and a second by Member Sales. Everyone raise their hand who wants to end this meeting. We are adjourned. Thank you so much.
We just adjourned.
We adjourned.
What?
We adjourned.
Okay.
Have to wait till next time.
Mr. Godinez, please request that in your next committee meeting. Thank you.
For the record, the time is 6:01. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Council, for approving RFP.